Good evening and welcome to June 26 Falls Township Reporter Supervisors Meeting. Let me stand and salute the flag. Small, can you call the roll for me tonight?
Yes, Brian Galloway, Jeff Dentz, Jeff Boraski.
Here.
John Palmer.
Here.
Erin Mullin, I'm here.
Let the record show that Mr. Galloway and Mr. Dentz both had prior commitments to tonight's meeting. Before we get started, obviously this is a new setup for us. We as a Board of Supervisors, we really appreciate Middletown's been so accommodating and welcoming to the to the board. And you know, this will be a quite a nice fit, obviously for us for maybe the next year a little more. But I did want to make sure Middletown's aware, we really appreciate their hard work and the manager's work getting us in here. Before we get started, we have two items of business. We'll start with Mr. Tequila, there's our Certificate of Achievement.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to let the board know we received a Certificate of Achievement Award for Excellence in Financial Reporting. After our annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year 2021 was completed, we qualified for GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. It is an attainment, its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by our government and its management. And I'd like to make sure that Betsy and her crew in the Finance Department are acknowledged for this.
Thank you, Mr. Rukoff. Next up, we have Chief Whitney here for the introduction of Falls Township's newest police officers.
Thank you. Members of the board, we were fortunate enough to hire four outstanding candidates who are here tonight to to meet you. Robert Evangelista, Mark Stillman, Ryan DeFrank, and Scott Hall.
Thank you guys for coming out, Chief, thank you. It's nice to see some new officers on our street, appreciate it. First item is public comment. Do we have a sign-in sheet anywhere? Or here, I should say, not anywhere. No, there's no names. And I believe since we moved to Middletown, are we taking public comment by way of Zoom?
Yes, we are.
Alright.
No public comment on Zoom.
No public comments then, okay. Is there anyone here that wanted to say public comment, didn't see a sign-in sheet? Alright. Item number two, John Fair, Minor Subdivision, 140 Falsington Tullytown Road.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Heath Dumack, I'm the engineer of record for Dumack Engineering. We're here this evening to talk about a minor subdivision for Mr. and Mrs. Fair. They own the property at Penn Valley Road and Falls Tullington Road. The lot itself is approximately 1.7 million square feet. The bulk of that lot is a ex-quarry pond. They have built a home on that property. And we are proposing a minor subdivision to spin the home lot off from the remaining parcel. There have been several review letters, including the latest from Jones Engineering on June 13th, as well as conditions of approval. We can go through those items, but everything on the Jones Engineering review is a will comply. I apologize, I can't hear.
Was it preliminary and final?
Yes, sir. This is preliminary as final. As I said, it is a minor subdivision, simply one lot being spun into two.
Okay.
The lot that has the existing house on it will be approximately 47,000 square feet. So it substantially exceeds the requirements from zoning for building lot in that area.
Mr. Boraski, there's not land development plans that go along with this. This is not like what we're going to see in a minute with Trench Tech, which is preliminary land development. This is just a minor subdivision.
Okay.
So we're not looking at plans, we're not looking at development plans for the building. We're just looking at, literally they're subdividing the property.
Okay.
It's small enough that it doesn't, it's not required to go through the entire process.
Okay. Any questions from the board members?
No.
Any public comment questions? Is there any questions or comments from Jones Engineering?
No.
So we need to make a motion?
Yep.
Is there a motion from the board?
This is Resolution 2023-25, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, have a good night.
Thank you.
So item number three is Trench Tech Shoring Solutions Preliminary Land Development, 1979 Bristol Pike.
Good evening, I'm Jerry Gorski from Gorski Engineering, representing Trench Tech at 1979 Bristol Road. Trench Tech Shoring Solutions does those metal trench boxes that you see along all the highway work. And currently they're maintaining all those different sized forms and storing them at this location and running the operation out of the office portion of the building. And they want to get into the manufacture, not just the maintenance of those structures. So the plan before you is a 7,000 square foot building addition over existing impervious area. We have the added parking that this addition needs, and it would be a small manufacturing addition onto the existing building. We've met with your staff and worked with your engineer. Everything in the engineering review letter is a will comply. We don't have any questions on our end, but we're here to answer any you might have.
I think we were just loud, or that's what, like our paperwork, like.
Oh, yes, that's what happened to me too, thank you.
Alright, so the review letters will comply.
Correct.
Is there questions from the Board of Supervisors?
Yeah, question, how many jobs is this bringing? Are you anticipating any more jobs?
Yes, there will be more jobs. Currently, they have welders and fabricators that maintain the forms, but with the addition, they'll be able to hire four more people at this location.
Excellent. No, I have no questions.
Just for the engineer, is there any update beyond the June 13th letter?
No, the June 13th letter is the latest correspondence.
Okay, thank you. No other questions?
I have no questions, is there a questions, public comment? I don't see any hands.
No public comment.
Is there a motion from the board?
So moved.
Mr. Boraski, this is listed on the agenda as preliminary land development, but the resolution says preliminary and final.
Okay.
I'd ask the township engineer if there's any reason why this should not be preliminary and final.
We don't have any outstanding comments in review or foresee any comments that would.
And everything is will comply.
Correct.
So it'd be appropriate if you wanted to make this motion to grant preliminary and final.
Is that what you want?
Absolutely.
So we have to amend the motion, or we're good? You want to have John amend his motion?
Yeah, amend the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Adelations, good luck.
And that was Resolution 2023-26.
Alright, item number four, Certificate of Appropriateness for 3 South Main Street, Texmas Parcel 13020311001, replacing existing roof.
Good evening, my name is Kimberly Prairie, and I'm the Executive Director of Historic Falsington. We are the owners of that structure. We're simply replacing in kind on a portion of that structure that was damaged during the storm in early April, and just looking for the final approval.
Any questions from the board? It's pretty simple.
Now I see everybody signed off on it on the historical review board, so.
Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Is there a motion?
So be it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything, Kim.
Item number five, consideration of resolution for the Sterling Act.
Thank you, Mr. Boraski, this is a resolution that would join the township's voice in support of amending the Sterling Act. The Sterling Act was passed many years ago in 1932. And what it essentially does is it does not allow local municipalities to collect any earned income tax that is otherwise paid in Philadelphia Wage Tax in the city of Philadelphia. So if someone lives in Falls Township but works in Philadelphia, then they would pay the Philadelphia Wage Tax, and none of that money will come back to the township. This resolution would again join the township's voice to others that are encouraging amendments to the Sterling Act that would allow the township to then collect that money.
So again, this is just, this is just us signing on, it's just giving us a voice in this, in what they're, in this movement?
Correct, unless and until the legislature.
It has a long road to go.
Right, unless and until the legislature actually amends the Sterling Act, everything will remain satisfied.
Just, just curious, I don't remember, Mr. Rukoff, but do you know what we would recoup from Philadelphia?
Yep, it is 1.18 million dollars is the estimated impact of the Sterling Act on the township.
Is there questions from the board?
I don't have any questions, I just know a lot of residents came to the meetings displeased that we couldn't recoup anything from residents who worked in Philadelphia. So I hope that they're at least satisfied that us and other townships are trying something. So this is really for, it's for the whole township, but I hope that, I hope those people see this.
Mr. Palmer? Is there any public comment? There's no hands here.
No public comment.
And this is a resolution? What's the resolution number?
2023-27.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Number six is consideration of hiring Mark Stillman and approval of resolution requesting reimbursement of cost of basic training program. So are we going to do these separately, we have to do them all separately?
Yes, they'd be done separately.
So are we going to get public comment on these two? Okay, is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Is there any questions from the board?
No questions.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Are these done by resolution as well?
Yes, that was Resolution 2023-28, and the next one is going to be 2023-29.
There's been a motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Number seven is consideration of hiring of Scott Hall and approval of resolution requesting reimbursement of cost of basic training program. Is there any public comment? See no hands?
No public comment.
Is there any questions from the board?
No questions.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So those two officers already are putting through to the Police Academy?
Correct.
Okay. Item eight, consider ratifying award township insurance policy for the period of June 18th, 2023 to June 18th, 2024. Mr. Tequila.
The board is being asked to consider approving a proposal from Argonaut, which is our current insurance company for the year 2023. The new renewal premium is $432,500.
Questions from the board?
No questions.
No questions.
Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item nine, consider proposal from Remington and Vernic Engineers for rectangular rapid flashing beacons for New Falls Road and Vermillion Drive. I'll introduce this one, Mr. Tequila. So, so as most people are aware, especially that live in that area and have children that walk to Pensbury High School, a few years back when the township created sidewalks along New Falls Road, we also created ramps and a crossing between from Thorn Ridge to Vermillion Side, and then obviously back at the end of the day when they go home from school. We've had some incidences there, and probably more close calls than we can even imagine. The Board of Supervisors got together with our township manager's office and engineer's office, and this is a project that the township's actually sponsoring. This is a state road, but the township felt it was in our best interest and the residents' best interest to move forward with this project. So we were looking at putting beacons on both sides. Coming up and down New Falls Road, there'll be wireless push buttons, more than likely communicating. Are we going wireless, wireless push buttons, I think it is? Will be wireless, we're not sure, right? We're doing push buttons, right? Are they wired push buttons?
Yes.
Okay, that's alright. So we just hope that, you know, when we get this in place, we will definitely be asking our police to help enforce. We want, we want the traffic to stop, allow these families and their, and their, and their children to cross safely over New Falls Road. Right now, you can drive up New Falls Road from Penn Valley to Tyburn and see there's a couple memorials already that exist along the side of the road, so every little bit helps, and I know the township supervisors are excited to see, see this completed. Do we have any kind of timeframe that we're looking at?
We're expecting about a four month to, four months to start a construction and a six month total construction.
Okay, so not by the time school goes back, but hopefully in the fall, it'll be completed in. But it's definitely a step in the right direction to improve the safety along the Falls Road. Is there any questions, Board of Supervisors?
No questions, good, good work from the township manager's office, the township staff, and Jeff doesn't want to say it, but really Jeff Boraski stayed on top to make sure that this really got going. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
Great project.
Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Alright, is there a motion?
So be it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chief, we'll definitely be reaching out when we get this going, we can definitely get, you know, make sure we enforce, you know, thank you. Item 10, consideration of fee agreement engagement between Falls Township and Campbell Durant PC for special labor council.
Board is being asked to consider a fee agreement between the township and Campbell Durant to provide labor and employment legal services, including reviewing the township's collective bargaining agreement and drafting recommendations for Act 111 contract negotiation strategies. The blended rate for shareholders and associates is $325 per hour, for paralegals and law clerks, $180 per hour.
Is there any questions from the board?
No questions.
No questions.
Any public comment?
No public comment.
Is there a motion?
So be it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 11, consider ratifying agreement between Falls Township and PFM Group Consulting LLC.
The board is being asked to consider a fee agreement with PFM Associates. They will provide financial analysis, collective bargaining support, and interest arbitration expert testimony services for the township through the path contract negotiations. Their total, the hourly rates for managing director is $365 an hour, for director is $345, senior management consultant is $325, senior analyst $265, and their analyst is $245 an hour.
Any questions for Mr. Tequila?
I have no questions.
No questions.
None.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Is there a motion?
So be it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 12, consider ratifying permit and identification agreement for temporary use of Middletown Public Hall for township meetings. Mr. Tequila, we're here. We're good?
Yes.
Is there any questions from the board?
None.
No.
There are no public comment, there's no one here.
No public comment.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 13, consider the 2023 diesel unleaded fuel bids for Falls Township. Mr. Will Lawson is here tonight.
Good evening, we do have one change from the memo. We were going with the price for the off-road ultra-low sulfur, and we just wanted to do the low sulfur diesel. So we want to switch that from 57 cents a gallon to 32, 32 cents a gallon for the low sulfur diesel.
I'll second that.
Is there any questions?
No.
Just give me one second to find.
It's under 6,000 gallons.
Ultra-low sulfur from 57 to.
32.
32,9.
Yeah.
Thank you. I have no questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Staying there, Jay?
Huh?
Staying?
Yeah, I got the next one too.
Item 14, consider bids for sale of township surplus vehicles, Mr. Lawson.
So one of the vehicles had a bid that did not meet the threshold that we asked for. We asked for a reserve bid of $1,200, and the highest bid that we got was $960. So we're asking if you could approve that to sell that vehicle.
Mr. Gallagher?
Sorry, I had a little trouble hearing Mr. Lawson, but he's.
So it sounds like the reserve is 1,200, and the closest bid was nine, what?
960.
So we're asking if the board wants to sell the vehicle?
Yeah, the appraisal came in between 1,200 and $1,400 for 2002 Ford Explorer.
It's, it's to the board's discretion, it did go out to public auction, so we can accept the lower bid, or we can go back out and re-bid it.
Just for the board's information, this is the second time this vehicle's been put out to bid.
What's that?
This is the second time the vehicle's been put out to bid.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to sell the vehicle.
And I'll second.
Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Item 15, consideration of escrow release requests.
The board is being asked, actually, do we need to do these separately?
You can take it all at one time, as long as they're going to approve everyone, but you just need.
You want to do them all as one?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, the board is being asked to consider escrow release requests for, one for MM Metals in the amount of $79,611.31. For Wawa Incorporated, $2,199. Waste gas fabricating, $43,256.76. Lincoln Storage LLC, $253,551.05. This escrow, this is actually a letter of credit escrow release, and it's escrow release number three.
Any questions from the board?
No.
No questions.
No questions, any questions for, as you from the engineer's office?
No questions.
Is there a motion to release the escrow?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Item sixteen is appointments to various boards, councils, committees, and commissions. I don't know if we have anything at tonight. Do you guys have any?
I don't have any.
We have nothing outstanding here at this point, right?
No.
Okay. Can we just move on from that agenda item? We'd have to do nothing, right? Okay. Um, item seventeen is the minutes from April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, and June twelfth, twenty twenty tw, tw, twenty twenty-three. Is there any questions from the board?
Uh, can we table the twenty-fourth since I wasn't here and we won't have a majority?
So you can still vote on the minutes. You're not attesting that you were here. You're just attesting that these are the official minutes of the township.
I don't have to attest to their accuracy?
Uh, bu, well, you're, you're saying that these are the official minutes of, of the township and they're being adopted as such, even if you weren't here. Um, I presume you read them and, uh, no, no, in all seriousness, it's not a matter of...
I could recite them.
It's not a matter of attesting to their accuracy. You're just approving them as the, as the minutes as presented. Unless one of your other board members who is president wants to make any changes, you would be fine voting on them.
I'd still prefer to table that one.
Then table it.
Thank you.
Would you like to just table the agenda item for, does, does that matter? It's just minutes?
You can, it's just the minutes and I don't think there's any reason right now that we need to have our minutes done, so if you want to just table this until July, that's fine.
Are the unofficial minutes on the website?
No, things don't go on the website until they're approved.
Then I'm okay with doing May and June if you are.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion to approve May and June's...
Oh, you weren't here, um, how you feel?
Yeah.
June twelfth?
I wasn't here for, um...
I can motion, make a motion to table this entire item.
It's fine.
Second.
This is a special meeting.
All right, so there's a motion and a second to table the minutes due to, um, the amount of board members present who were not present at these meetings. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think that's safe. Um, number eighteen is engineer's report.
Mr. Jones had, uh, submitted the, uh, May twenty twenty-three engineer's report. Uh, I could go through a brief summary of the, uh, updated projects or, uh, if you'd like, where I could, uh, just field questions.
Oh, did you want to go through or did you want to...
Uh, that was, that was my question, I guess. What would you prefer? I could go through. Joe would typically do it or I could, uh...
Um, you can go through the stuff that was just maybe updates. We don't have to go through the projects that are stale or have been sitting, but if there's any updates that we need to be aware of, I would appreciate just going through the update.
Sure, right, okay. Uh, for land development, uh, McGill com, composting, uh, building footings and walls and grading, uh, that remains, or that's in progress. Uh, K and A at Pharaoh's Hills, that's the, uh, Wawa on Lincoln, uh, that's open now with the TCO. North Point Phase One Building, uh, paving work is being completed, uh, and work around the, the maintenance, the maintenance building. North Point Phase One Building Three, landscaping, uh, is being performed and the building is completed. Levittown Car Wash, drainage and concrete work is being completed. North Point Phase Two Buildings Four, Five, and Six, uh, work on Buildings Five and Six continues. Mission barbecue, uh, requires some additional stabilization for a TCO, otherwise that's, that's substantially complete. LPC Morrisville, uh, is, uh, we're in the middle of a floodplain application review. That's in progress. Horton Salt had a recon meeting and the, uh, construction is, uh, commencing. Pensbury School District Falcon Field, that work, uh, remains, uh, in progress. North Point Area Three Buildings Seven, Eight, Nine, and Ten, uh, that's, was approved for clearing and filling work, which they're, uh, doing right now. Uh, Fair property was tonight and Air Liquide is, uh, going to be on the planning commission agenda tomorrow night. Earth disturbances, we've got Calamar Properties, which is near completion. Alliance Jeffrey Venture, uh, which has a rain garden. Recon work that is in progress. Samus Enterprises LLC is complete, has a CO. McDonald's Drive Through, uh, needs some stabilization for a CO. And Snipes Property, the construction is underway. Uh, Township Projects, the Township Building renovations, we received an MPDS permit, and I understand that's going, that's being prepared. Uh, the construction sets are being prepared for that. Uh, there's a question last meeting about Wilston Drive, and we completed survey, uh, for that to go along with our design, so that, that was just completed last week. So that's in, in progress, and we've got Martin's Creek, Vermillion Hills Footbridge, uh, design work in progress right now. If there's any other questions on the township projects, that was, the township building renovations is the only update that, that Joe had on here.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Any questions? I, I have none either. Uh, we just move on. We don't accept anything in the report, right? We just...
I think we do.
We do.
I think we do.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the engineer's report?
I'll make a motion to accept the engineer's report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item nineteen is the bill list. Mr. Tekeeta, would you, um, read the notes on the bill list, please?
Board is being asked to pay the, uh, the bills for June, and the total amount for June is three million, two hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixty cents. Of that, approximately one point seven million is in payroll and benefits. The remaining portion, uh, was used to pay, uh, the, uh, for general asphalt for the twenty twenty-two road program. Olinbeck for the rental and upgrades to the temporary office for the township's relocation, uh, and payments to the professionals for the design of the, uh, new township building.
Is there any questions regarding the bill list?
No.
No questions.
Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Is there a motion to pay the bills?
Motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Miss Small, can you poll the board, please?
Yes. Jeff Boraski?
Yes.
John Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Do I do the others who aren't here?
Nah.
Yeah, I'm a yes.
Item number twenty is the engineering bill list. Mr. Tekeeta?
Board is being asked to pay the bills for Jones Engineering Associates for the month of June. Uh, the total amount is two hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty cents.
Is there any questions from the board?
No questions.
Any public comment?
No public comment.
Is there a motion?
Motion to pay the bill.
Second.
Motion made second. Can you poll the board?
Jeff Boraski?
Yes.
I'm a yes. John Palmer?
Yes.
Uh, item twenty-one is executive session. Mr. Clark, can you comment on the executive session?
Yes, Mr. Boraski, prior to the meeting, the board held an executive session to discuss personnel matters, a matter of litigation and a matter of potential litigation.
I didn't hear, where was that meeting?
The executive session?
Yeah.
That was held at the, uh, the Falls Township Municipal Building?
Oh, okay.
And yes, there was a little confusion about where that was being held, but some members of the board relate to the executive session.
Some, unfortunately.
They, they are forgiven for being...
And some didn't come at all.
And some didn't come at all. They, they're excused.
And some had flat tires.
Our, our more...
I think our executive sessions prior to meetings will be held here moving forward, but...
They will?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the plan. Lauren and I were there on time, though.
Thank you.
All right, item, um, twenty-two, uh, Chief, you're up.
Thank you. Members of the board in the, since our last township meeting, the police department handled one thousand, eight hundred and twelve calls for service, including ninety-three, uh, crashes and five overdoses. If you have the report in front of you, I'll just hit a, a few of the highlights. Um, we stopped by on June tenth to, um, join some Girl Scouts in their car wash on, at the Burger King. Troop two five five two has always been really kind to us, dropping off Girl Scout cookies at headquarters, which are extremely popular with our men and women in blue. So we dropped by to support them for their car wash. Uh, Henry Ward retired last week on Wednesday after thirty-six years of service to the police department. We wish Lieutenant Ward well. Uh, you met our new hires, uh, but I, I would take a moment, if you don't mind, just to mention that we still have vacancies. The next Bucks County Consortium test will be held in October, uh, for anybody listening at home who's interested in a career in law enforcement. I can tell you that it's an outstanding place to work. I've been working for the Falls Township Police Department since August of nineteen eighty-eight, and I still love coming to work every day. We enjoy tremendous support from this community and tremendous support from our township government and the board. It's a great place to work. We're an equal opportunity employer. If you want to be a cop, come give me a call and we'll tell you how to become a cop here in Falls Township. I stopped by, uh, at the Pensbury Senior Assembly to talk to the, uh, senior class before their prom. Um, what a nice group of kids this year. I've been doing that for the last four or five years, uh, even before I was chief, and for the first time I got a standing ovation at the end of my little talk, so, uh, I wish the senior class well. Uh, and the only thing I would add is that, uh, next month on July twelfth, we begin our Youth Police Academy. Uh, it's a fantastic program. Uh, if your middle school or high school age child is interested in any of the emergency services or just wants to learn a little bit about law enforcement, um, it, it's virtually free. We charge almost nothing for it. Really, we just charge some money for the lunch that's catered on the last day. Uh, it's ten days and it's a great opportunity, uh, and it's a lot of fun. But I'll, uh, be glad to answer any questions.
No questions, thank you.
I'm sorry about Mr. Chief, but where was it being held at this year?
The, um, Youth Police Academy? Uh, at Pensbury.
Uh, we need microphones on?
I'm good, Chief, thank you. All right. Item twenty-three, manager comment?
No comments.
No comments. Item twenty-four is board comment. Mr. Palmer?
Uh, I'd just like to echo, uh, thanking Middletown for allowing us to use their facilities. It's a big help and, um,
Same for me.
All right, and I have no comment. At this time I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.